Good evening and welcome to the Shasberry Elementary School Board Meeting. At six thirty. And we will begin with citizens' comments, if any. Seeing none, okay. Next, we will go right into the presentation, the Shasberry School District Configuration Analysis. Mr. Pembroke.
So hopefully everyone has seen, at minimum seen it before, and hopefully preferably they've read it. It's been out since April ninth, two thousand fourteen. I think it was delivered to you at your board meeting that night. And we've been planning on talking about it every board meeting since, but for various reasons, haven't done so. I'm not going to read through it. I'm hoping that everybody has read it. I will give you the highlights. This is a similar document in format to an analysis that was done a few years prior. Maybe two thousand nine tennis area. At the request of the board back then. Obviously, some things have changed, so this is a slightly different document. This, one of the big changes you would see if you compared the two documents is that one identified more students in District One than were there on April ninth. I will tell you, this is a snapshot at that point in time, based on your FY fifteen budget. So at that point in time, there was thirty students in District One. I will guarantee you, there is probably somebody more or less. I don't, I didn't look at the number, but if it's thirty, I'd be shocked. So it's either one or two more, or one or two less probably at this point. So it's set up pretty much, a very truncated report of, similar to your annual report. It shows you your student population, your grade configuration that was contemplated. The first section is really your FY fifteen budget process that you go through. We look at the students, we look at the grade configurations, we determine the personnel needed to serve those students. And then you go through the tax rate calculations that we've talked about many times. Cost per pupil, CLAs, and all the other good stuff to determine taxes. One of the big pieces of this is a significant tax rate between Shasberry School District and the Shasberry ID District within North Bennington. The two driving factors of those largely, the biggest driving factor is the cost per pupil in the North Bennington grade school district opposed to the Shasberry school district. Then another slight variation is the CLA associated with the Shasberry ID opposed to Shasberry school district. So the second section, you know, it's not rocket science, kind of stretching imagination. We took the thirty kids that were identified at that point in time. Theoretically, put them into the Shasberry school district population, working with Jeff, as well as Wendy Pierce for a special ed. I think there's only two or three, maybe four, special ed students that are in that population and the needs associated with that. And you'll see there on page six what a proposed configuration would look like. And the only real increase is in sixth grade, they get to twenty-eight students, which is, some would argue, could get by with one teacher, but you know, Jeff believes, and I don't think anybody disputed him, that it'd probably make more sense to split that class up. So we added a teacher there. We look under the narrative of the staffing. We also had a pair of educator. Right now, you've got one pair of educators that bounces between the two, between kindergarten, right? And so we added another pair of educator, one dedicated to each kindergarten class. So that'd be your staffing increase associated with those students. Page seven, you see that staffing increase is roughly ninety-five thousand dollars. Various material supplies, equipment, another sixteen thousand dollars. Your ESU assessments, because they are driven by equalized pupil proportionate share to other districts in the ESU, would go up roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. And you see down there under the notes that, you know, special ed actually goes up three. We did look at transportation. We don't believe there being an increase there. We can adjust the routes sufficiently to pick up the students. And that was a pretty simple analysis. When you do that, if our assumptions hold true, you know, the big thing is the cost per pupil will be the same. It's at ten eight eighty, ten thousand eight eighty-four. Which is for both entities, the Shasberry district and the ID district portion of North Bennington School District. It is lower, for the Shasberry ID, it's significantly lower. The tax rate is roughly the same. The only difference now is the CLA. The CLA will adjust that tax rate slightly. If this was to come to fruition, I would assume, I'd probably bet a lot of money on it, that the state of Vermont will eventually just collapse those into one grand list. And to be one CLA, you wouldn't continue having two different taxing districts. They could calculate one CLA for you. And if you look at the comparison from what you're currently going to experience in FY fifteen to what you would experience if this was in place today, it's going to be a slightly lower tax rate for Shasberry and a significantly lower tax rate for the ID district. And then the last page is just Exhibit A to give you some background on what got us into this. So that's my quick summary. I mean, more than happy to answer any questions. I know there's a few questions out there. Be more than happy to try to answer them. I hope I can answer most of them, but somebody may throw me a curveball.
Anybody in the audience, anybody on the board?
I've got a couple of questions. Well, a comment, first of all. And this really goes to the fact that, as you pointed out, Rick, this is a snapshot that was accurate on April ninth or whenever you put it together. And one thing that is going to be different, I imagine, if you sit down and do this like in October, now that we've got, and looking until next year, so let's say, not October, but let's say next March, so next year's budget. We will have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have two full classrooms, I think, for each of the seven grades here. So that sixth grade class right now is just one class. That class is graduating, you're going to have two kindergartens projected?
Yes, you're talking for FY sixteen.
Yeah, right. So I'm talking, if we were looking, if we, you know, did this analysis now going forward, and this isn't going to happen this year, I'm imagining, so thinking out into the future, you're not going to have to hire an extra teacher, is what I'm getting at, to accommodate these thirty students. If you can fit three of them or four of them into each grade level.
Depending on what their current population is, I mean, for all you knew, ten sixth graders moved in there on July first.
Right, right. But if you stuck, if you still had thirty.
I do know, I just didn't look at it. I should know, but I didn't look it up.
So if you still had thirty, you could get, you know, a year from now, we could be probably fitting them all without hiring anybody more, which is just going to make the tax rate even lower for Shasberry. I don't know whether you have this, Rick. The other question I had was, when we first started talking about this, we were, it was suggested that by making this change, we could spend even more money than we currently do on programs without impacting the tax rate. Basically, you know, we'd be able to spend this much more and the tax rate to Shasberry residents would be the same. So I don't know whether you have a number?
I do. If you look at page eight, under the Shasberry, we see budget expenditures of three million five ninety-six. That number would grow, or, as you're saying, you could spend an additional hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and you would be back to the tax rate that we originally set for this tax year without those other students being included. Is that the answer to your question?
I think it is, yeah. And I think that it's another way of looking at it and saying, you know, here's what more we could be doing in theory.
I mean, theoretically, two and a half teachers, depending how you want to slice the pie, it's, you know, six or seven pairs. There's a whole host of ways you could spend that money. Each theoretically, theoretically, each and every year.
Okay. Eric?
I'm good for him. Just make the comment that, you know, we'll try to keep this conversation going now. It's been dormant for the last couple of months. Seeing we're back in business again, we'll pick it up and maybe on a monthly basis, address a certain part of it, let people know where we're at and how we're moving.
Well, what's really curious to me is that there aren't any people from that district here that are concerned about it, other than this young lady over here.
There's one.
Just other than.
I could get more here.
But are they concerned? I mean, is this, is this our issue or is this your issue? You know, I'm not, I'm still not sure why we're doing this.
I was asked.
I know. I'm still, I'm still really unclear. I mean, just to, just for our taxpayers.
We have another one over here, Mr. Bullock.
I think I can address that question. I think there's a lot of skepticism about whether this can reasonably go forward given the changes going on in Montpelier about consolidation on other levels. So I think there's multiple ties on people's attention. But I think there is concern about this. It's just not rising to the level of, is this really plausible at this point?
Well, one thing we wanted to have was a realist, I'm sorry, Joyce, approach to it. Can it be done and what would it take? So I think that's keeping that concern down until folks actually know that there's a reasonable approach to it. It's been approached many times in the past and never got, in my opinion, to this level. So that's, that's the next thing, Jen, is to just establish whether or not we can, we can do it and then see if there's an appetite to do it.
It's been, I assume that true question was directed at me since you looked at me.
It keeps circulating, it seems like it just keeps coming around.
It's been discussed numerous times. Or, you know, my observation of the last ten years, and it could have been many times before that.
Yeah, I mean, the history shows that it has to.
I don't know how far all of those got. You know, don't know that either, because I didn't have my fingers in it at the time. But, you know, the conversation has been taking place at minimum, you know, at the corner store for many years.
Right.
About every ten years.
Yeah.
It's become a live issue.
And with the, with the falling student population and the rising tax dollars is kind, in my opinion, has kind of put pressure on this conversation.
But not for us, not for Shasberry.
Oh, I've heard it from many Shasberry residents, as well as Shasberry ID residents.
Yeah, okay.
And they've approached me about it, so that's why I brought this up. Joyce?
Well, I've been in the business here, in the district for over forty years. And believe me, the townspeople in Shasberry and the ID have discussed it, wondering, why doesn't the money come here to this district? So it's been a conversation. I don't know if it's necessarily come to the board. I think years ago, it did, but it's been a topic of conversation of this district. A lot of people that I know have said, we should bring District One. That money is going to a different district. Now, back to the concern that I and a lot of people have, is that we live in Shasberry, our taxes go to another town to a private school. Now, they chose to close that school and do this. Everything was going pretty well. We had a good school down there, and then they decided to do this. So now, I want my taxes to go to Shasberry. And a lot of people have that concern, that that's the reason.
But it seems like the community chose to do that, close it and put it into a private school.
Yeah, the majority rules, less than half of the eligible voters voted, and it was won by twenty-some odd votes.
Right.
So that half was split. So not every eligible voter voted, so, you know. It's like our elections, you don't get everybody out to vote. But that is the concern of the people right here in Shasberry. This school district, that they want that tax money to come here to the school.
Just wondering if Jeff can tell us about enrollment projected for September from North Bennington?
From North Bennington?
Yeah, ID or North Bennington.
Tuition students?
Yeah.
We still have the one tuition student. We've had some inquiries, and I think we have one that's going to fill out a couple of applications. But we still currently just have one tuition student for North Bennington.
There would be ample room if someone decided to make application and?
Depends on the grade.
Okay, we're still at that?
Yeah, I have to look at class numbers and decide whether it's going to benefit or hurt us class number wise, depending on the grade level. Some classes, the grade levels have room. Some, I would like to leave some room for natural growth.
So just to that point then, the analysis we just went through showed we could accept all the ID students at this point.
It would, yes. It would be tight in first and second grade, keeping it under twenty. And I think first and second grader at nineteen and twenty, so it'd be very tight there. But looking at just the numbers, yes.
Anybody else? Is everybody all set?
I think so.
Okay.
Continue on.
Anything else, Joyce, or you're all set? Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Glad we got it done.
Okay.
Five months later.
I think that would be good.
Okay. We will go on to the action items. The financial treasures report. I have one question on the treasures report. The phone books that we bought come out of the Kip Fund. And that's still showing a hundred and eight. Will that come up at the next month's treasure?
That's the June thirtieth report.
Okay. Okay, so that'll be the next treasures report. It should read like sixty-two. Okay, there. I just wanted to make.
Well, depending, that may actually, that may not actually happen in August, so you may not see it until, because the next one you'll see will probably be July.
Okay, so not till September.
June thirtieth, right? Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But yes, that was the plan, to take it out of the Kip.
Okay. Okay, I'll need a motion and a second on that to accept?
Still moved.
Second.
Ten seconds. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye, okay. Next, we'll go into the consent agenda. Okay, we have the minutes of June eleventh and July fourteenth. Anything on those?
Skinned it.
I've forgotten.
I didn't go into detail, I just skimmed it.
I planted something.
You did, I just skimmed it, like I said, I skimmed it.
I think you're going to get off time.
I don't know what it was.
We'll go through all this and then we'll take a vote at the end, instead of doing everything separately.
Okay.
It'll be a little easier. Okay, hearing none on those. If everybody's all set, we'll go to the warrants. We got number ten twenty-five for two hundred and one thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-four cents. Number one thousand one for eight thousand seven ninety-nine seventy-nine. Number one thousand two for thirty-nine thousand oh ninety-two oh eight. One thousand three for nine thousand five twenty-seven eleven. Number two thousand one for seventeen thousand seven fifty-eight sixty-seven. Number two thousand thirteen, ten thousand eight twenty-three fifty-seven. And number two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two ninety-one sixty-one. Any questions on those? I have some. Go ahead.
I have one on two thousand twenty-five, I mean, one thousand twenty-five. The amount for seven thousand Ingles and Associates. Ingles and Associates. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mount Anthony Union High School District. And may you bill back to Shasberry for ideals?
I think that's on two thousand thirteen, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I had the same one, so that's fine.
Oh, yeah, that seems like, I don't know what that's all about.
That may be for a student that, you know?
Well, I do, but I just don't want to say too much.
Okay.
It's a student that with special needs that served best in that program. That's a, that's a partial year cost for that student attending that program.
Jen, that was at seventy-two hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't, I just, if you need more detail, we'd have to go to the second section.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Larry?
Got one on that same page and that same voucher, Green Mountain Express Transportation Envoys, six eighty-two. Any idea what that was?
That's homeless, I think it's right. There was, again.
No, that's not homeless. That was another question they had.
Transportation, I think. I got the other one on homeless, it's two thousand one. Get this one first.
This one shows up a couple of times.
Two zero four three six?
Yep.
Yep.
I've got it as a homeless.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a shared, it's a shared expense between you and another district.
Is that a recurring expense, do we see that?
Theoretically, homeless resets on July one. So depending on, so if they were residing in your district and they became homeless in Pownell, say, they theoretically have school choice between Pownell and Shasberry and we, someone is responsible for transportation. What generally happens is that the two districts share the transportation. And typically, most of the time, they want to stay where they started school. I don't know the specifics of which way this one went. I can get those and get back to you.
Well, there's at least one more that's under Green Mountain within our packets. On voucher two thousand, under De Four, there is a homeless transportation that I thought was a separate issue. You're saying all three of those address?
They could all be separate issues.
Okay.
On voucher two thousand?
Yep, first page.
Oh, it's two thousand one, the four thirty-eight?
No, you don't have two.
Oh, okay, you're right, yep.
Yeah, I don't know that one off the top of my head. I can, I can get back to you on that one.
Okay. Rick, could you go over that just one more time of how that occurs between districts? A child is homeless in Pownell? Becomes homeless in Pownell?
I used the example he was hearing became homeless.
No, no.
You can use whichever one, it doesn't matter, it can go either way.
I don't understand why, if he's homeless in Pownell, why is Shasberry?
So if, if, if the child resided in a residence in Shasberry, and a residence can be defined a whole host of ways.
Sure.
And for whatever reason, well, I'll give you a real absurd reason. If that family moved in with their parents in Pownell because they're building a house up on Blueberry Hill, that's considered homeless. And you would be required to transport that child. They could be making a million dollars a year. But just because they are displaced and not in their residence, that's considered homeless. So that's probably the most absurd. We've had that happen, not that people are making a million dollars, you know, a year in salary, but we've had that happen before.
But the most realistic example of that is somebody?
The most realistic example is somebody loses their home here in Shasberry and they get placed in a motel somewhere by DCF, either in Bennington or Pownell or even, there's someplace up here, they used to be up here at the old Iron Kettle. They still run it, they still have rooms up there or not. But there used to be a number of people that were placed up there as residents by the state for short periods of time. You know, the law kind of reads that if they were your child and they are displaced someplace else, it's your responsibility to transport them back here if that's where they want to be.
If they choose to.
There's generally a, you know, handshake, arms-length agreement with most of the districts in the state, because if they, if that child goes into Pownell, say, they're going to incur costs just trying to transition that child into them. So they say this, and we'll, we'll share the fifty percent transportation. You keep them, and everybody's kind of at an arms-length transaction. That's generally the scenario that happens.
That's for the balance of the school year that the transition occurs in? Or, when you mentioned it resets on?
Right, theoretically, it resets on July one. So if the child was homeless in Shasberry, I mean, was residing in Shasberry, became homeless and was placed in Pownell for whatever reason, whether it's a family or motel or wherever. Theoretically, July one, they become Pownell residents if that hasn't been cured. I say theoretically, because it's, it wouldn't be outside the normal course if an evaluation was done of that child and the best place for them to be would be in Shasberry. And we would work with Jeff and all the other people to try to figure out how to do what's best for that child. But theoretically, everything gets reset in the new fiscal year.
Anybody else?
A different, different item.
Okay, go ahead.
Do I need to, just before we get off of there, so I got to get back and do four or no?
Do four is pretty clear. It's the other two that, if they're the same issue, the same.
The other.
Oh, homeless, okay.
Same exact amount, too.
I knew of the one Green Mountain, was there another Green Mountain you said?
There's one buried in there, in one of the, one of the vouchers, Rick. The one you could focus on would be the two, the check number two oh four thirty-six.
That's the one I'm aware of.
Right.
Do you know which voucher the other one's in?
I don't. Caught me off, I thought that was a different issue. You know, I thought that would be for a program or something that, and I didn't. and I didn't, uh, the other one was so clearly marked that...
Uh, Bob, it, it was, it was, um...
Yeah, I, I think Dave's found it. What voucher number is that, Dave? Two thousand one, voucher two thousand one?
Same amount?
No.
Six eighty-two?
Uh, check number two oh four eighty-seven.
To Do Four?
That's to Green Mountain Express.
For the four thirty-eight seventy-five.
Four thirty-eight seventy-five.
This, this year. That's clearly marked homeless.
That one's clearly marked, right, so the only one that's...
And just so, and just so you know, um, it's a good learning moment, teaching, teachable moment.
Life lesson.
It, what's that?
Life lesson.
If you look under the account number, you, you know, you see where that one says one hundred and a bunch of zeros and four twenty-two? You see the account number over to the...
Yeah.
Next to the last column.
Yeah, those long identifying numbers that...
Yeah. You see that, one hundred and a bunch of zeros and four twenty-two?
If it's the same?
That, no, that four twenty-two designates a prior year expense, that mon, that money's getting pushed back into last fiscal year. So that was another homeless situation, um, that took place last year, all of those were in last fiscal year.
Okay.
And my guess would be they are probably different circumstances. Should I go back to my original question, do I need to get back to more information or you guys?
No, I think we got it, or I got it, and everybody else seemed to be...
Anybody else on the warrants?
Content with it to begin with, so... I do have another one on voucher two thousand.
Okay.
Uh, starts on page ten. It's the item Southwest Supervisor Union, uh, preschool tuition.
Okay.
And, uh, that's just a comment on that, that, that's, that's presently what it's costing us.
Last year, again, look at that account number, I believe it should say four twenty-two.
Four twenty-two.
It was a prior year. The preschool, what we do, I mean, you probably recall, we had a lengthy conversation last October, November about bumping up the cost and, um, serving all the students. And, um, what we do is we wait till the end of the year gets done. We apply as much of the grants, whether it's, um, Medicaid or IDAB or anything else that we can apply to that. And we bill you the net number, so that is the net. The sis, the, the, um, the program costs more than that, but we had some Medicaid funds, the minimum that I know of, and it seems like there's another grant too. Um, and it probably is a good, um, tee-up, or I don't know if segue is the right word, but, um, Karen does wanna come speak to all the boards about last year's programs and results and costs and stuff, so, uh, she can give you more detail at that point in time, but...
When you say there's, uh, there's, uh, Medicaid funds, are you talking district-wide? That we would share a part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's factored in here, so this is...
No, no, that's your net.
Right, so we've gotten the benefit...
Oh, yeah.
Of those funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
How many kids does that serve, Rick, do you know?
Four or five? I think it's twenty-nine, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
How many do you...
He was twenty-nine last year.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine? Do you see that growing, Jeff? Are you able to see, do you have any?
I haven't got any numbers this year from Karen yet to see what, um, I know we budgeted much more this year with what happened last year with the budget, so...
That number may shock people today that it's, that it's reached that status, but can you walk us up through there, Rick? From where we started with that, I, I remember it was...
It started at fifteen thousand dollars, right? And, um, you know, you guys, Shasberry was the first district, um, that actually took advantage of the VCPC grant money to, um, to get into this program. And the purpose of that money was seed money to help build your ADM, i.e. your equalized pupils, um, to get to a break-even point. And that's what you're at, that's sixty thousand dollars. Uh, when I did the analysis last October, November, I didn't bring it with me, I can't remember what it was, but I would be willing to guarantee you that you were either break-even or it helped you on your tax rate by some nominal amount, like one, one hundredths of a cent or something, but it was basically break-even. Because it grows your equalized pupils, which brings your tax rate down. But yeah, that's, that's grown from fifteen to twenty-four to forty to this, was it sixty or sixty-four thousand?
Uh, sixty, basically sixty-one, sixty thousand, seven ninety-six.
And, and it will grow, to answer your question of Jeff, but i- i- it's gonna grow, but it's because the state is requiring us to, to serve now three-year-olds as well.
Right.
And there's a whole new product that's coming out, there's gonna be a whole new formula. We have been, um, contributing, um, pretty much the state average in tuition, which was about twenty-seven hundred dollars. The state is trying to create a number and it's...
You're talking per child, right?
Per child.
Right.
And, um, the state now, per the new law, will actually set a state tuition rate. And, um, that number is being talked anywhere between thirty-four hundred and five thousand dollars. So, um, it'll create some challenges.
Well, the thing we have to be aware of too is, is perhaps vanishing Medicaid money or, or, as you say, there's been a blend of different monies that have come in and affected that, and as those disappear...
Yeah, I mean, no, I, I, you know, you did get the benefit, don't, don't think it was a huge amount of money, I don't have it in front of me, but... I mean, it's, it makes a difference, but it's not gonna make a material difference.
If you continue on that, uh, page eleven, uh, we go into all of the assessments from the issue.
Okay.
Could you sometimes give it, give us a, a menu of what those are? I mean, I know you know what, what we're assessed for, but just to look down, I mean, there's some pretty healthy numbers there, and...
That represents seventeen percent of each one of your assessment streams, so you and, I guess there's only, that's right, there's only two, two SU members now, so you and Fran, although Dave sees this as an MAU member. Um, you know, that assessment sheet I show you, if you just look at the chat, and I'll be happy to distribute it next time to the whole board. Uh, but if you just look across the Shasberry line, the admin takes seventeen percent of that. You know, again, I can do a teachable moment, tell you how to read...
Be great.
Tell you how to read the account number, but, um, it, that's what that is.
Okay.
And remember, we expanded our assessment streams this year as a result of an interesting budget conversation.
Yep.
So we used to have like seven or eight assessment streams, we now have twelve, I think. Is that what those, do you count, is that what there is, twelve assessment streams?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Can you answer your question?
Anybody else? Okay, uh, we have a resignation. And we also have a nomination. So, any questions on those? Okay. So I need a motion in a, in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Todd, second. Any, any other questions?
Well, it's a little disappointing that Ms. Boudreaux is leaving us.
I, I can agree with that, yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised.
I was surprised, but I hope she, uh, is going somewhere there.
Okay. All in favor on the consent agenda? Aye. Larry?
Abstain.
Okay. One abstention. Okay. Um, I think, Jim, you've gotta leave, so why don't I bump you up to now?
Okay.
So that way there, it's, uh, it just changes around a little bit, but...
And I'll be, I'll be brief.
Yep, that's fine.
Fran, maybe you should introduce Mr. Boudreaux.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, this is our new superintendent, Jim Calkeen, and, uh, go ahead, Jim.
Well, it's my second time to Shasberry.
Right.
First time, wasn't anybody here.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't. Couple things I wanna go over with you, and, uh, what I also have is something I need to take, um, with me. No, I don't need, I have the signature sheet that you have on your agenda for, um, the amendment to the ESP contract. It's a personnel matter, E, so that you need to take that up and the chair needs to sign this because I need to bring this to all the different districts, uh, on these Wednesday nights for that to be signed. So I'll just give a brief introduction, some of you, most of you have met with me. One of the things that I'm doing in my first, uh, few months here, I developed an entry plan. The entry plan, uh, really is spelled out as my, uh, listening and learning tour. And I've met with, let's see, four of you, I have one more to meet with, uh, of this committee, and it gives us some one-on-one time to, uh, and there's a series of questions that I ask every board member the same question, uh, same set of questions, compiling information that from there, everything about, you know, what, what drove you to, um, serve on the board, how long I've been on the board, what your expectations are of me as superintendent. And I've found those meetings to be very enlightening and actually have enjoyed them. And it's been a lot because of doing that with every, uh, board. I think there might be a total of thirty-nine different board members or something along that line, if I can count them all. So that, that's part of my entry plan, the other, a meeting with, and I'm not, I'm not a lover of buzzwords, but I will use the word stakeholders, that is part of the entry plan, meeting with every stakeholder group. There's a series of questions that went to the principals, I'll be meeting with them and they'll, they have their questionnaire that they have to fill out for me, and their meetings will actually begin next week in their individual, um, schools. And I will, uh, combine a tour of their building and a meeting with them to go over what their questions were. And then their central office personnel, they all received a different questionnaire, had individual meetings with them. And then, uh, then I will start reaching into the community beyond the board and there's a different set of questions and what the expectations are, and ultimately, hopefully, a, um, a survey out to all staff because I can't possibly, you know, but using Survey Monkey that will go out with a set of questions for them too, and it'll, uh, jumpstart me into the district and give me, uh, hopefully, uh, insight and a picture to, you know, what, what I'm looking at. And then I will report back my findings to the board at future meetings once I compile all of that, so, my listening and learning tour. The other, uh, thing that I've instituted, um, is work, workplace expectation training. And it started at the central office, and we have an outside vendor come in that's completed two sessions now with this, with the central office staff, and there'll be one more, um, next Friday, so that we get everybody to work there. And what, what do I mean by work, workforce expectations? Well, I wanna set an environment, I wanna set a climate that we all work in, we all work together, and, um, I, I want to encourage behaviors that, uh, embrace that community that we all work together. And if I don't set what my expectations are, then I can't hold you accountable, so that's the whole purpose of it. Do I think that having someone sit through a two-hour training session is going to, um, change anybody? No, I don't. I do think that it sets what our, what our, our playing field is and what our expectations are. I, I think it's been well-received and, um, I've received some positive comments from the central office staff on that. And, uh, depending on how that goes, we'll, we'll see how far, um, we roll that out to, to other staff members. Uh, it has been suggested to me that I should do that with, uh, with, uh, the school boards too, but, you know, we, I don't think we'll go that far. I, um, I will tell you that I am the person responsible for why Laura Boudreaux has resigned from you. She is coming to work at the central office, uh, she's the new director of, uh, curriculum, uh, instruction and assessment. We're very glad to have her, um, and I'm sure it is a loss for your school and, but your principal was very gracious and, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to work with her and having her oversee our curriculum, uh, development improvement and, uh, professional development for the whole supervisory union, so that, that's where she's going.
Oh, good, that sounds great.
So I think, uh, we've also hired a lot of, been hiring a lot of people, not just Karen Shasberry. And one of the things that I've been attempting to do is I want to meet with everybody that we hire. Even though the principal, uh, I try to support the principal and the other directors on who they want to hire, I haven't rejected anybody that any, principal has sent me, and I think the screening committees have done a good job, but if I'm gonna sign your nomination paper that I present to the board, then I wanna be able to tell you that I've met everybody. I think I conducted my thirty-second interview today. Uh, some of them are brief, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, but I, 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 I think it's important that they, that new employee gets the face time with me, that I value, um, them enough coming on board that I can give them that time. Then I take them to our HR director who then processes the paperwork, so that, uh, that's been working well. And the other thing that I, that I've been focusing my time on since coming on board is planning for, uh, the opening days, meeting with the principals and what they're doing, and our professional development committee that is planning the one day that, uh, the supervisory union is doing. The, the opening schedule a little bit different this year. The teachers on their first day are reporting to their individual school building. Then they're going to, all of us are gonna come together on Tuesday at the high school, uh, for a presentation, uh, keynote, uh, address and all of that, that's in the morning, you're all gonna get invited to that if you would like to attend. That'll be done by eleven-thirty in the morning, and then they'll be turned back to their schools or to some pre-selected program like Luke Shasberry, you're doing something on that afternoon. And all the pairs and special ed teachers are also meeting together. And, uh, and then, as you know, the students will actually return for a day before, or two days before, um, uh, Labor Day holiday, which is a little bit different this year, so, uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. So that pretty much sums up what I've been doing since July one, and, uh, I, I honestly say there to tell you that I've enjoyed it so far, so, we've still got one meeting scheduled.
Yes.
So that's it for my report, I'm going to go on to North Bennington, I'll be, I'll have to bring this to North Bennington, they're not gonna sign this, so there's not kind of, so I'll leave that for Rick to deal with and you can go back and then I'll bring it to, uh, where my next Wednesday, uh, Pownell and...
Okay.
All right?
Very good, thank you, John.
Just declare, the clerical error that we're correcting when we sign this, I don't know if anybody else can speak to it. I tried to figure out what it was and I couldn't see it.
It's on the back of this, this, my understanding is there's a word included here, um, that we had proposed in negotiations. So it was in a draft of our proposal, they had rejected it, and the final printing went in, the wording was there. So it, it had to come out, and I believe it was thirty, it was thirty years or...
Thirty hours?
Thirty hours, thank you. So that's what, that's what needed to be removed. So it was a word that had inadvertently been included in the final printing of the contract, and it was, uh, been reading by the association, they, they had caught it and we had, so we made a new signature page reflecting that. Thank you. And we're, we're in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we'll zip right into the policies. Uh, first policy is number fifty-one fifty-six, student nutrition and wellness, that is for adoption. Is there any questions, concerns? Jen, you must have something.
Um, well, I think you were going to give us an answer about why...
Yeah, and I did get that, that is...
Many changes.
I think the state had changed that. We went over that at the MAU meeting, I don't have my papers with that, but you're right, I did follow that up and I just don't have the thing with me. I don't think I put it in here, but... Yeah, I don't have it here with me.
Could say it basically rewrote the whole.
Right.
Gen, generically, and I don't know exactly what the question was, I wasn't here, but I can assume because I've heard a similar question, multiple variations in multiple places.
Well, actually, I think Dave asked a, asked that question.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if this is Dave's question or not.
Oh, okay.
Many people are asking a very similar question. And, and the, the short answer is, um... we took out all the redundancies that are um recorded in federal regulations. We refer to the federal regulations as um one of the documents that we are required to follow anyway. And um some of it was, actually, some of it was in conflict with that, but most of it was just redundant. And we didn't want to have to worry about if the feds changed a sentence that when we had to follow it and change it in our document. So we just uh are incorporating that as the meat of our policy. I don't know if that, I don't even know if that, I don't even know if that was your question or not, but I'm just guessing.
Well, my question.
Something similar to that.
Yeah, it's pretty similar, I mean, the, cause you know, I was on the committee for so long that it, we took great effort into writing certain things into the policy and then everything, it, it seems just like it was taken away.
The, the committee largely rewrote this.
Okay.
And um the committee presented it to the pers- uh the policy committee.
Okay.
And they made some tweaks to it and went back to the food service committee who recommended different tweaks. And this is the um compromise solution, but we're, the, the food service committee is pleased with the output.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
I was, Fran, I'm, I should say something here, I guess, because I did have some concerns and objections. And, and I'm not, I, I still do to a certain extent, but I talked, I talked to um Maureen O'Neill from the Abbey Group yesterday, who was on the road, but um was kind enough to spend a few minutes uh answering some of the questions I had. And the uh, I, I think that the changes that are proposed here aren't, aren't going to result in any actual practices changing. First of all, it's not gonna mean we stop selling anything or we start selling anything. The, the one, the one thing that she, she, at the end of the conversation, I said, yeah, I, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with taking out a sentence at the beginning that says the districts have a, a goal or a guideline of reducing childhood obesity, which is just cut. And I, I said, I didn't think it would, you know, we didn't wanna send a message that we didn't feel that was important. And she agreed and said, you know, that, that sentence probably could have been left in and it wouldn't have made, you know, a, a difference one way or the other. I, I, the committee, two committees are involved here, they do a lot of work trying to set this up. So I don't think it makes sense to try and derail it to get a sentence or a phrase back in it. And Maureen pointed out, there's always another round, you can go through and revisit it and.
Right, they, they need to get this adopted, but you can still change this, this can go back, if they wanna put it on a list.
Yeah.
And you wanna put that sentence in or somebody wants to just re, revamp this a little bit, you can still do that in the same year. So I mean, like I said, it's for adoption, but nothing's written in stone, so you should be okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my, my feeling is that if, you know, if Maureen signs off on that, it's, I, I think it should be all set and she always has the best interest, but if going forward, things change with the Abbey Group and whatnot, then those things aren't listed in here, you know, that are important such as that. So I guess at that point, we reject, we address it or?
I would assume so, un- unless uh for some, if there was anything serious enough, she probably would say, oh, let's not, you know, don't have this for adoption, cause I'm sure she's had some input into it, so. But like I say, you can, you, this can still be changed, if somebody decides that they wanna see a different wording in here, so. But other than that, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
For a, okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of this policy? All right, okay, unanimous. Okay, next is policy forty-twenty, uh it's appointments of administrators other than the superintendent. This is for warning. See the changes and crossouts on this one. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Need a motion and a second on this one.
Do we need to do that Fran on this, or is this just?
This is for warning, you still have to, yeah, you still have to prove it for warning. The next would be adoption.
Now, who initiated each changes? Is it because there's a new superintendent and the policy?
Well, this came, if I'm not mistaken, uh the policy committee, it was, I don't know who's on the committee, you know, it's Leon and I can't remember if.
Well, from here, it was Pat when he was.
Oh, choose, that's right.
Has the superintendent seen this one? The new superintendent seen this one?
I have no idea. But you know, that's a good point, so.
Well, the inspiration for it, a lot of it came from the search committees that were dissatisfied with some of the elements that uh had to be considered. And so they recommended some changes back to policy. I think some of those are reflected here.
Well, superintendent should see this.
I'm not saying he hasn't, I just don't, based on what he just said, I'm not sure he's spent a whole lot of time in policy.
Yeah, you, you make a good point, though, I, I, I would have, you know, I would rather table this for now and, cause I don't know if he's seen this. And I'd rather have him look at that and have some input, if that's the case.
Yeah, cause it could.
If there's, nobody has a problem with that, so we will table this policy forty-twenty. Do I need to have a motion and a second on that? I don't think so.
If you're gonna table, you technically need to take a motion to table.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, good to table. Okay, next policy, this is for warning also, public, uh seventy-three hundred, uh public participation at board meetings. This is for warning. I didn't see any.
Not big changes.
Pro, no. Any questions or comments? I'll take a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Larry. Um, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, okay. Okay, next we'll get right into the facilities. Jeff?
Jay, Colleen and Gary have finished their job doing the general summer cleaning and painting and some minor maintenance projects throughout the summer. We completed uh the kitchen floor, replaced the whole flooring, had some tiles, many tiles that were missing. So we had uh given forecoming command and just replaced all those tiles, which were nice and then repainted the whole kitchen, they threw everything out of there. Looks like a, a new place, it's very nice. Water line, it's pretty much done, except for a little bit of paving left to do, put the water line soaked up, new plumbing in the old boiler room, clean that up a little bit, there was some um additional costs.
Yeah, we gotta talk about these, these three, but.
One thing was the uh state requires us to have a backflow protector uh so that um water doesn't get sucked out of our system. State required it, we had to put that in. Um, there was, what are the other three that you got there?
Um, one of them was the hydrant, I think it was noticed over here on the, this is east side of the building.
It's east side.
There's another hydrant. Um, the, the town or the fire department donated a hydrant, I guess. Which isn't that expensive, they're fifteen hundred dollars a pop or something. Mark Oderato uh actually donated his time, but there's two thousand dollars in material. I ran, you know, Jeff, Jay and I talked about it, I rented my friend, time was kind of of the essence. So um we're gonna hopefully, you know, hopefully get you to ratify our actions that we, you know, we took there. Um, there's two other change orders on the table. And that was for two thousand dollars, if I didn't say. There's a thousand dollar change order um when we were putting a new wireline into that utility room. All the piping that are on the walls is just sitting on rebar. It's not, uh they're, they're not hangers, they're not secure to the walls. It, it was blatantly obvious to me that we should be correcting that before we have a issue there. Metal on metal, um I don't know with the new waterline, I don't know how much those will be vibrating against that rebar, but I just would feel a lot more comfortable if, if they were um secure in place. And that was, that's a thousand dollar change order, um that we're hoping the board will approve. And then the third one is um, and I guess Fran knows more about this than I, than even I do. But I guess Jay says that um dr- uh drain in the middle of your parking lot here in the front of the school, the north end dips down. I guess there needs, there's always been a need or there's been a need for a new drywall system in there. And that drain needs to be brought up in preparation for blacktopping project that's gonna take place in a year or two anyway. Mark said since his equipment's on site, he'll do that for nine thousand dollars. So um uh we'd like the board to consider that. Change order as well. So there's, there's really three change orders, one's already been enacted, we're hoping you'll ratify it. The other two um have yet to have work done. Well, I don't think so, I went in there, I didn't see that.
He told me that was done.
I don't think so.
If anybody's wondering, that's that center drain in the middle of the parking lot out here where the buses pull in. That's been screwed up for a while. Um, so.
Will that get done before school starts?
Uh, that's what's gonna be my next question.
Will that get done before school starts?
Yeah, I think they're planning on doing it right away. Probably start tomorrow.
So the um.
If it can, if it can be, you can't do it.
Right, yeah. Did the, 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 the result will be a, a parking lot that's more level, that doesn't dip as much there, is that?
Probably, yeah, but it's, it's still gonna be, it's gonna be.
It's gonna have the pitch to it.
Yeah, it's gotta have the pitch, but it's not gonna be so um pronounced.
But the, so what are the, what's the issue that they're correcting?
Apparently the drywall underneath it has failed, it's not, uh it's probably either filled in or collapsed to some degree. Probably not collapsed too much, cause you probably see it in a sinkhole formation of some sort. I don't have much detail.
Doesn't drain well.
Now, Bodine's repaired, kind of semi-repaired that, I don't know how many years ago. And we knew eventually that that was gonna have to, uh probably now's the time to do it, cause we're gonna end up doing it anyway. I'd really rather not do it in the winter.
But shouldn't it be done when we're black, we're blacktopping? I mean, is there gonna be damage to that?
Well, I think that the, the problem is the drywall itself in the ground, not so much the, you know.
You could, you could do it then.
Yeah.
I don't think it hurts to do it now, but you could.
What is it gonna look like after it's done? I mean, is it gonna be like a big hole and it's just gonna have gravel in it and patched up?
Yeah, it'll be patched like it is now.
Like, did you see out there where they?
It failed, it failed before.
Yeah.
It failed before and you can see where they repaired it and patched it. There'll just be another patch until, until the final blacktop is laid over.
Uh, if we can go back to the original contract for doing the water line, uh so the contractor met his obligations and met the terms and was done at the agreed price. So the ex, the extras we're talking about are aside from that.
Outside the cap.
Great, great.
And even these extras are still well within the original budget.
Fifty thousand, the, that, that was the target number that we had out there, right? Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That project's not something we have to put out to bid, though, for the nine thousand, we can just do it.
Why is that right? I'm sorry, Dave.
Less than fifteen.
No, yeah, go ahead.
Less than fifteen thousand.
Okay, so it's a, it's a cap limit then that allows us to do that, okay.
People who have a general sense of what something like that should cost feel that nine thousand dollars is a fair price?
Probably, yeah, I'm sure that's, that's a good price. Actually, I wonder, well, anyway, I won't say that.
It's all right.
Well, well, when we're looking at bids a hundred and fifteen, sixteen, and he was thirty-four. I don't wanna look a gift horse in the mouth.
And I think I heard the word donate uh the time and effort to put the.
But anyway, anybody's questions, thoughts, or, I don't have a problem with it, but we'll do this as a board.
Are we doing this as, do all three?
I wanna do all three.
If you're comfortable and do all three, if someone's got a problem with one of them, you just split them up and do one of them.
Yeah, we got the hydrant, which is two thousand, that's materials. Uh, you've got the uh boiler room, that's a thousand, correct? And we got the drain out here, I'll just call it drain, nine thousand.
And that's still under our budget?
Yeah.
And the hydrant's already been done.
Yeah, it's in there. So, yeah, we're stuck on two grand. Well, I, yeah, yeah.
Want a motion on that?
I, I would like a motion and a second, yes.
I would like the motion, we approve that.
I need a second.
Expenditure that we've already made plus the recommendations.
All three?
All three. All three.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
There you go. All right. Next, okay, personnel.
We talked about that, really.
You guys got this, I, I.
Oh, we've already done that, I'm sorry.
You need to take action. I don't know anything about it, I'm just here to get a signature, so. I can't help you if you got questions.
That's the change in wording in the ESP contract, correct?
Right.
That they found.
That he talked about just a minute.
And we agreed to it, okay.
So you gotta collect the signatures to go.
You need to take a motion to accept, to approve the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there you go. And just I have to sign it, correct?
You have a second, you need to get a vote.
Oh, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Richard, it was unanimous. Short hand for unanimous?
Yeah, you know, it's you.
Gotta have a certain ten.
I see one's in black already, I need to have one.
Okay. Coffee to you? Who you coffee to? And they is eight, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Okay. You're all set, principal, free for.
Uh, first up, the state released our annual yield progress results. Being in two thousand fourteen, there's no child left behind active, any school took the kneecap test and had one student not be proficient or above their considered school um in need of improvement in that, in failing. So regardless to say, uh we had seventy-four percent, I believe, in writing proficient or above and we had fifty-seven percent in math proficient or above, so we were identified in both areas. Required actions are similar to last year, we're gonna, we have a plan, um started to implement that under mathematics for uh multi-tiered system supports. And um pretty much giving kids as much opportunity and um teachers, the skills, or the, or the resources to meet the kids' needs. Next is upcoming staff professional development relates to that. We have three professional development days coming at the end of the month before school starts. As Jim said, the first day's a building day, which is teachers, where we'll be addressing MTSS and RTI here at Shasberry and what the protocol and procedure will look like here at Shasberry, so students get every opportunity to be successful. We have Bill Atwood returning on the second day in the afternoon, Larry, I believe you saw him while he was here. He's gonna do actually ma- writing in math with our teachers and Woodford's gonna join us for that afternoon. And uh Chromebooks, we have some professional development in that area also. Hopefully um one of our district tech integration specialists are gonna come in and sit down with uh three through six teachers who are getting the Chromebooks, um give them a little, some of them, many of them are very familiar with what they can do with Google Apps. Some have a few questions, but she's gonna give them a little run-through, a little intro. And it's gonna be continued professional development throughout the year, where this person will come in throughout the year and help the teachers and the students as we implement the Chromebooks, which is the last item on my, on report, which are arriving very soon. What's nice about those, if you remember, is they're very easy, as far as once we get our SVSU system set up on them, we can roll them out, there's not a lot of updating or anything like that, it's all internet cloud-based. So they're ready to run very soon, as soon as we get them here in the school. And I've talked with Steven Zellie about that, how we're gonna implement that, and he's our tech supervisor. And we also had um successful summer camp sponsored by the after-school program, uh it was the second week in July. Kids did um. Kids did, um, most of their typical summer camp activities, but they also did some reading and writing, uh, activities throughout the day, it was a whole week. Uh, they went on a field trip almost every day to Lake Perrin, to, maybe, I don't even remember. One World Conserv- Conservation, they went to the circus, um, museum down the road, went to the Big Oak. It was very successful, the kids had a great time. Uh, we had a couple of our, um, former Shasberry students as, uh, helpers, ca- um, camp counselor helpers. Um, hoping to grow it for next summer and, uh, maybe do two weeks.
How many kids did?
We had thirteen. Thirteen, it was thirteen this year.
Now, was that open enrollment or was, or were they asked to?
It was open enrollment, yeah. Just a Shasberry student. Lots of arts and crafts also. April La Croix was our, is our, um, a parent who did, um, some hazing arts and crafts activities with the kids each day. And Gabby Watson was the teacher, did the lessons in reading and writing plus coordinated the activities for the, the camp.
That's it? Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, chairs report, uh, one thing I wanted to remind Rick, the generator agreement. Not important to have it right now, but I just wanted, I remembered it.
It's on a pile right on the right hand side of my desk, and Jeff's noticed how clean my desk was, so there's not much there.
So I said, before I forget it.
I haven't forgotten, I would've seen it, it's there.
That's, that's fine. Uh, at our last SVSU meeting, we talked about the administrator contracts plus teachers negotiated agreement. Uh, we, uh, accepted a food service contract renewal. North Bennington Prudential Committee, Committee requested an adjustment to their assessment that failed a, a vote four to five. Approval of the consolid- consolidated federal grant.
What does that mean, can you go back to?
Oh, I'm sorry, with the, uh, four to five vote. Uh, North Bennington came to the SVSU board and wanted a, an adjustment of twenty-seven thousand dollars to her assessment.
For?
For their assessment, SVSU assessment, what they are assessed. Yeah, okay, and it was voted on and it went down, it was four to five. That four for it, five against, so.
Is that for one particular area, Fran?
Yeah, but it's.
I think that it's, I think they, they only have that one assessment, don't they?
Well, they were, um, they were largely arguing curriculum, um, with, within the administrative assessment, I believe.
Administrator, okay.
So they were looking for more support?
No, they were looking for a reduction, they didn't want, they wanted to pay less money.
Yeah, and it was for the previous year, was, the, the year ended last?
The year that just ended, FY fourteen.
And my concern with that is, and, and I said, well, if you're gonna give it to North Bennington, you're gonna give it to Shasberry. Cause we will pay everybody, all the other districts will pay more if you give them an, an adjustment. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast. So, anyway. Uh, let's see. And I, other than business things, I think that's it. Those are the, um, oh, the other thing, we did, did go over job descriptions for administrative assistant to early childhood education. There was a change in the position of early childhood, childhood, uh, education secretary to, to administrative assistant. Increased pay range for educational interpreter. And also, uh, Mr. Pembert, our business manager, CEO, was elected as president of the Vermont Association of School Business.
CFO.
CFO, excuse me, well, it could be CEO too. Vermont Association of School Business Officials.
Gonna be some people that are.
So that was pretty good. There you go. Uh, and that is my report.
That'll be the front, that'll be the headline of our friggin' page.
Put that in, yeah, gee, oh, perfect. I'll get some harassment on that one.
No, I will.
Yeah, but I'll be right there. Okay.
How long was the Abbey Group extended there?
This was their final one year, they're, they're going, we're going out for bid again in January, and you want, you want back on the cliff?
Jen, I think you did very well on that.
Can you hand someone for this?
Me.
You're tied, you're on it?
Yes.
Oh, you'll enjoy this year. You will, buddy.
It's fun, it's fun, but really, nobody does it better than the Abbey.
I'll just food there.
Unless they get a whole new.
There you go.
Applicants.
Okay, our next regular Shasberry meeting is, uh, Wednesday, September tenth at six-thirty. Uh, you do have a budget status report enclosed. And the, uh, you'll see the paper near the Vizbit, or the motor vehicle idling policy guidance two thousand fourteen. So I do need a small executive session.
Small?
Fran, did you jump over other?
Yes.
You did.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have an other.
Did you, all right.
I have an other.
Thank you. Is there any other?
Thank you, Mr. King. There's a, what's being billed as a committee meeting in South Burlington tomorrow. You may have picked up, uh, the information from the School Board Association.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm going up as a lister, I'd also like to go up as a school board representative. I'm not sure if anybody else is interested in going. It's only a ten-hour day, but, no, no takers?
I think Todd might want to go.
Oh, it's a, uh, uh, you'll recall that South Burlington or Burlington, uh, the budget was rejected last year. And it was quite upsetting to them and they realized that they were going to have to do business a little differently. And they thought it would be best to have a, start a conversation about that as to, uh, how we generate taxes, uh, income to pay our school budgets. So it's, it's a two-pronged, uh, conversation, uh, based on how we tax, what we tax, and how we fund our schools. And it's, it's basically a learning opportunity, they realized, uh, early on that there were a lot of folks out there that really didn't understand how this whole thing is put together. And, um, so they thought, uh, Burlington thought, uh, they'd like to extend that invitation to, to sit down and have an open conversation about it, uh, to the state in general, so.
Okay. All right, is that it?
That's it, that's my other.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, I need a motion to go in the executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Yes, both.
Will, will there be action on that, Fran?
I, well, I, probably not, not tonight.
And are we following the new rules for open meeting laws and?
Absolutely, it is absolutely personnel. Nothing else.
Why would you even ask that there?
Why would I?
Why would I even include it in the minutes?